Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Monday, November 3rd, 2025. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Carol Smith. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. For those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
To move.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda has been amended. Next is proclamations. We'll first do the two that need to be read into the record.
Council President Lavelle presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November 3rd, 2025, to be Darlene Cash Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And, let's see which one is... And Councilperson Teresa Kail Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November 10th, 2025, to be Dolores Jean Mitchell Slade Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve?
To move. Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both proclamations have been approved. We will return to proclamations, but now we'll move on to public comment. I would like to remind everyone the rules of Council state that comments are limited in matters of concern, official action or deliberation which may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. After your call, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Lena Zetsoff. I do not see her online, nor in chambers. Therefore, our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Uh, Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Oakland, and also Reykjavik, Iceland. "Dance With Me" is a song that matters a very great deal to me, the one by Orleans. Candidate representing the Global Intelligence Society for Mayor of Pittsburgh 2025 and President 2028. Primary website is globalinformationintelligencenetwork.net. Fact: Pittsburgh demography, 1950, 650,000; 2025, 275,000, subtracting the 30,000 students, transitory students who are in Oakland. Fact: 1950 to 2025, the Democratic Party has been in charge of the Pittsburgh government. Generalization: catastrophic Pittsburgh demographic decline has been overseen by the Democratic Party. Prediction: Probability is greater than .9 that a vote for the Democratic Party into the offices of Mayor and Council again will continue a pattern. Increase of tax-free, fed-fueled, student-funded institutions like CMU and Pitt, and a decrease in taxed, fed-fractured, and student-terrified individuals. On Pittsburgh demography, I and G.I.S. have a goal of 1 million for this city by 2050. The PCAN, the Pittsburgh City Ally Network created by me over the last two years, now has 50-plus ally cities. If each one of these 50 emigrates 1,000 out of their cities into the City of Pittsburgh between 2025 and 2035, this city will increase by 500,000. It will require a housing explosion. Well, that should excite real estateers and developers, and it should also make ecstatic people who are advocates for inclusiveness and affordability. Why? Because more houses means profits go up, and also the, the housing cost goes down. On the vote for Pittsburghers, I think we need a Pittsburgh citizen identity card. We need vote-by-voter verification for whom. That means that Allegheny County Election Division would have to provide not just that we voted, but for whom. But we need neighborhood councils in order to be able to accomplish this. Elected neighborhood councils so that we can check for misplacement of our votes or misapplication. So, I think we have a lot to do.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Chris Mori.
Hi. Apologies for my voice. I'm sick, and hence why I'm calling in. I'm Chris Mori, Squirrel Hill, District 8, here representing Inform Up. And I have 111 survey responses covering three issues discussed by council in the past week. The first issue was relating to the expanded availability of vendor permits, including in city parks. And we asked, the bill would allow vendors in city parks, but doesn't specify where. How should vendor locations be determined? The, let's see, with 30% said, there should be, oh, let's see, let me provide context. So, 28% said that the, the location should be determined based on guidelines allowed anywhere that meet the clear criteria, while 26% said specific locations only designated as part of the approval process, while 30 respondents said that there should be a hybrid approach, a combination of any area that meets the guidelines, as well as specific locations, while 12% said they didn't want any vendors in city parks. One comment in alignment with that position said, "Our city parks are a refuge from urban life. Vendors in city parks will change the peaceful, natural spaces into retail spaces. I hope you do not put vendors in city parks except for events such as Jazz Festival or other, or the Vintage Car Show." The second question we asked was with respect to the $4 million in block grant funding. We asked, should the city be required to disperse emergency grant funds, dollars, by the end of the calendar year? And we asked the support to oppose. So, 50% somewhat strongly supported, 45 respondents, only 10 somewhat strongly opposed, 11%, while 38% said that they were not sure and needed more information, and said, a comment to that effect, from Lawrenceville, "We need more information on community development funding timelines before the end of the year. Sounds nice, but what is a normal timeline? Is this faster or slower than normal? Is this, is there a good reason why they, these funds might not be released right away?" The final question we asked was with respect to the Lower Hill District acreage reverting away from the Penguins to the city. And we asked for the Lower Hill, what should be prioritized in redevelopment, community-led process? This isn't the exact wording.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. With that, we'll return to proclamations, and Councilwoman Kail Smith.
You will have an opportunity to speak after proclamations.
Can we have the folks from CMU, Mrs. Bailey? Please come forward. Well, Mrs. Bailey makes her way up there. She's, she sends requests in for proclamations when she finds somebody extraordinary and doing great work. And, do you have your folks from CMU here?
Yes.
Are they coming up? Please come up. And if you know Ms. Bailey, she was the president of the Sheridan Community Council for many years. She's the chairperson, yeah, let's get her a seat. Sorry. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. She was the, she's the chairperson of the Disruptive Properties Appeal Board.
Thank you so much.
She's on the Zone 6 Public Safety Council. Sit down, please. And she just does a lot for the community. So, when she says that there's somebody worth recognizing, she makes sure that we do it. So, I just want to thank you, Ms. Bailey, for everything you do for the community, and for making sure that you made some recommendations. But if you know Mrs. Bailey, she's also a very proud graduate of CMU. And she's actually fluent in Russian. So, if anybody needs a Russian interpreter, we've got one right here. Whereas Dr. Joseph E. Devine, the current Associate Dean for Undergraduate Studies, Dietrich College of Humanities and Social Sciences at Carnegie Mellon University. And whereas Dr. Joseph Devine holds a Bachelor's of Arts degree in history from the College of Holy, of the Holy Cross in 1973, a Master's of Arts in Teaching with a concentration in history from Stanford University in 1974, and a Doctorate of Arts in History from Carnegie Mellon University, 1984. And whereas, from 1974 to 1977, Dr. Devine taught history at the American School in Switzerland, and he joined Carnegie Mellon University in 1979 as the Director, Director of the Academic Advisory Center, later becoming Assistant Dean in 1988, and Associate Dean for Undergraduate Studies in 2008. He also serves as Pre-Law Advisor, Director of the Senior Honors, and Student Defined Major Programs, and Secretary of CMU's Phi Beta Kappa Chapter. And whereas, Dr. Joseph Devine has played a pivotal role in the success of thousands of Carnegie Mellon students, mentoring and guiding many through their college years and beyond. He went well beyond his formal duties, and often securing work-study and campus jobs for exceptional students facing financial hardships, ensuring that they could remain at the university. And whereas, his dedication not only shaped countless individuals' lives, but also strengthened the bond between Carnegie Mellon and the City of Pittsburgh through the students he supported. CMU alumni consistently testify to Dr. Devine's longstanding and exceptional commitment to student success. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Dr. Devine, a longtime resident of Pittsburgh, who exemplifies the quiet, often unrecognized champion, someone whose tireless, tireless efforts enrich the lives of others and strengthen the community he serves. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November 3rd, 2025, to be Dr. Joseph E. Devine Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion to approve?
To move.
Second. Thank you, y'all.
I'm allowed to say a few words, I'm told. I'll try to make it a few. This is really overwhelming and much appreciated. A colleague of mine the other day mentioned to me that he thought I really deserved this, and my thought was, Lord help me from getting everything I really deserve. This means a lot to me. My work has, has been my lifeblood in many ways, and colleagues like Deborah have made it possible. Much of the, many, many of the examples that were cited as a basis for this proclamation resulted from collegial work with, work with colleagues at Carnegie Mellon, not least of whom is Deborah. In fact, in many ways, I think Deborah, you should be getting this award, not me.
She's gotten one, believe me.
But my name is on it, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna accept it with my thanks and my, my gratitude to all who are involved in this, in efforts to make this possible. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Bailey wants to say a few words. I'm gonna put the timer on Ms. Bailey. I talked to her on the phone for hours.
I would like to say...
No, no, here we go. And I'm also gonna say that Ms. Bailey is Kim Clark, Arch Clerk's aunt.
Good morning, everyone. I would just like to say that the proclamation doesn't begin to touch what this awesome gentleman has done for myself and the countless judges, the students that backed up what I said. One works for the Department of Homeland Security. He wouldn't even have stayed in the door if not for me calling Jay, and Jay making his machinations to keep that young man at Carnegie Mellon because his parents sent him up from Florida with no money and hadn't paid the deposit. I could not let this young man turn away because of money. I listened to everything that I had been hearing from Jay Devine. Jay made the moves. This young man has been 20-some years with the Department of Homeland Security. Success. We have a judge on the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals in Florida. He doesn't mind if I say his name, James Matthew Cola, because he's very proud of being a judge. We owe his career to Gene Devine. We have Rhonda, who was an attorney in Pennsylvania. We owe her career. Erica, so many students. One of the things I did at CMU was I processed students in and out along with book and rooms. But the greatest thing about processing leaves and withdrawals and returns was I had the opportunity to read why students were leaving. And being a Pittsburgher, I'm Nebby. I looked up their academic records, and if these kids were smart, we didn't want to lose that resource. And I would make a call to this gentleman, even if they weren't in HNSS, well, now the Dietrich College. And he would make moves to get resources and keep those kids. He did not look at, you know, finances, what they had, what their parents had. He looked at what they could bring to Carnegie Mellon. And I say he did an awesome job. And he also did an awesome job with me, because a lot of people don't know, but I've suffered a tragedy that didn't happen to me, but because of my son. And I took a leave of absence. And I went about doing my work, community things, but I got a phone call one afternoon, calm as he could be. I've never heard Jay raise his voice. Deborah, how are you doing? And I said, "I'm fine." He says, "I hope you are. It's time to get back to class." And that is how I completed my degree from Carnegie Mellon. This man got me to get back into school. I finished my undergraduate degree. Didn't complete Hines, but I finished the undergraduate degree, and he treated me to a singing telegram when I graduated. But so many of the students that I am Facebook friends with, all of them, they loved me, and I keep telling them, "It's not me," because I didn't, I didn't have any, I was a database coordinator. I didn't have that clout. I couldn't keep them in school. This man is who I called. And when you brought President, you know, Farnum and Vice President McNulty to my home, I wanted to tell them so bad, but I didn't know if it would get Jay in trouble, you know. And Dr. Marabian had asked, because I'm also an honorary alum of Carnegie Mellon, and Dr. Marabian had asked me, him and Mike Murphy, "How'd you get this? You didn't give any money." I didn't give money, but this man kept kids in school, practically beta. Every beta student that we had, had issues. I picked up the phone and called Jay. Those betas and ATO students championed me becoming an honorary alum, and I never gave a dime. But all of it is due to the work of this man quietly behind the scenes, lifting students up, just because they did not have the money. It didn't matter about race, economics. He was about the person. And before Teresa left, I wanted him to be recognized because of the phone call that I had with Judge, the honorable Judge, James Matthew Cola.
If you're wondering why I took the President of CMU to Sheridan, it's because I wanted him to get to know other parts of the city. We stopped at Mrs. Bailey's house, and he was, and he was very gracious about it. Come up, please, for the proclamation. Family, please come up for the proclamation. Everyone, everyone here, for Dr. Devine, please come forward. We're gonna hatch up here for the whole proc. Well, everyone from City Parks. We'll just do them all at one time. Is that okay? We'll do Morella's and Nancy Burns first. We'll do Morella's and Nancy Burns, and then right after that, we'll do Weston White. Hi, how are you? Okay, yeah, come up. Come up. We're gonna do, first do Nancy Burns and Morella. So, I'm happy to cheer City Parks. Come over this way a little bit. I'm happy to cheer City Parks. I'm grateful for the, for the opportunity to, to end my career the way I started my career with City Parks. It's my, one of my most favorite committees. Whereas, city events, neighborhood festivals, and year-round recreational activities cannot happen without the dedicated employees such as Nancy Burns and Morella Rinallo, who both have over 25 years with Parks and Recreation. And whereas, Nancy Burns, a lifelong Northside resident, earned a BA, earned a BA from Chatham College and began her city career in 1997 as a program coordinator in Parks and Recreation's Special Events Office. She became a full, she became full-time on April 14th, 1997, and was promoted to Manager of Community Enrichment Programs on January 2nd, 2023. And whereas, as manager, she leads arts and literacy initiatives for children and families across Pittsburgh, while also supporting senior programs in this role. She has advanced child wellness via the city's Cities of Service Gardening Grant and the Pittsburgh Langley's 21st Century Grant, introducing gardening and cooking programs at Pittsburgh Langley K-8. Now, in its 50th year, the City Parks' roving art cart continues to deliver quality arts experiences citywide. Additionally, Alphabet Trail and Tales promotes literacy through an annual large-scale event that brings stories to life. And whereas, Morella Rinallo, born and raised in Oakland, in the Oakland neighborhood of Pittsburgh, so was I, attended CCAC Northside before earning her Bachelor's Degree in Science from the University of Pittsburgh. As, as a child, she cherished picnics with her mother at, at Shenley Park, watching the new skating rink take shape, and dreaming of becoming a skater. That dream came full circle in 1997, when she began her City of Pittsburgh career as a part-time rink attendant and skate instructor at the very same Shenley Ice Rink. And whereas, over the next 14 years, she served in various roles, including rink attendant, skate instructor, learn-to-play hockey instructor, and farmer's market manager. In 2011, she was promoted to the skating rink supervisor, where she played a role in numerous improvements that enhanced the rink's experience for both the public and staff. These included installing an elevator, renovating the banquet room, and overseeing major upgrades, most notably the construction of the new, of a brand-new rink in 19, in 2019, and along with other facility improvements. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Nancy Burns and Morella Rinallo for their service and commitment to the residents of the City of Pittsburgh, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, November 3rd, 2025, to be Nancy Burns and Morella Rinallo Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
We have to get your copy. Director, is she here? Luann, do you want to come up? Sorry. No, I'm gonna give it to you first, and then we have to get copies from, sorry, Lori has to bring them up, sorry.
Morning, everyone. So, we have Nancy Burns, who couldn't make it today. She has a family emergency. I really wish she could be here so we could honor her in person. I was looking forward to it. So Nancy is amazing. Her work's amazing. She has put on Alphabet Tales and Trails 50 years, right? So, or roving art cart 50 years. That's unbelievable. Her work is impeccable. Her, she, she works behind the back of scenes to get the work done. She doesn't want to be acknowledged. I know her. She just gets embarrassed. She won't come forward at times as well because she wants to do her work quietly. So, I'm so glad that we can acknowledge Nancy Burns today for her 25 years of service. I'm so proud of Nancy. She's a dedicated worker to City Parks and has done amazing things for everyone in decorating and holding the children especially. She loves the children and the work she does with the children. After-school programs, just going back to going back into three schools, after-school programs, we're doing three, starting next year, I believe, is the start of the program she's doing. The kids that come out, 4,000 people at one event. It's amazing, the work. So, her and her team have just been amazing. So, thank you so much for honoring Nancy.
Thank you.
Rowley speak first? Okay.
First, I want to thank you for honoring me today, and I want to thank my husband and my family and my staff and the City Parks Department. It's been an honor and a pleasure working for the city and the city department. And I couldn't have done it without all you guys, all your help. It's... It's, you've been very supportive and all the love you've been giving me and helping me through, um, this, this journey here, so thank you very much, and thank you.
No, we'll, we'll take a photo as soon as I read this next proclamation, we'll do one with everyone together, okay? So thank you very much for your work, you, you, all the things in those, that proclamation talks about, the great things about City Parks and all that you do on such a shoestring of a budget. Whereas, citywide events, neighborhood festivals, and year-round recreation enrichment life, enriched life in Pittsburgh, these services are made possible by the Department of Public Works and City Parks, who maintain 3,000, and others, 3,800 acres across 163 parks, and thanks to dedicated employees like Clint Burton, Sean Crashna, and Weston White Senior, each with over 20 years of service. And whereas Weston, Tiny, as he's known, was raised in the Pittsburgh's Northview Heights neighborhood, oh, did you know, Keith Murphy? Keith Murphy, I used to work with him, I have to tell you a story, we're good friends, I'll tell you the story, I'll tell you the story when we're done, anyway. In the Northview Heights neighborhood and became a pillar of the community, since age 14, he has coached, counseled, and guided local youth, both professionally and voluntarily. He's led countless sports programs from flag football to, to video game league, game leagues, but baseball has always been his true passion. It runs in his family's DNA. And whereas, Mr. White began working with City Parks in 1997, deepening his lifelong dedication to community. Over the years, he's, he's served as, at several centers, Jefferson, Warrington, Brookline, Ammons, and now West Penn. Although he misses the youth in, in Northview Heights, neighbor, in his Northview Heights neighborhood, he continues to make an impact with special needs programs, workout crews, and his beloved pickleball players. And now, therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Clint Burton, Sean Crashna, and, and Weston White Senior, Weston White Senior, for their outstanding public service and lasting contributions to the City of Pittsburgh's community. And where, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, to be Clint Burton, Sean Crashna, and Weston White Senior Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I'm gonna tell them the story about my Northview Heights days. Come up, if, do you want to come up and get your proclamation? We'll have you to say a few words and then take a photo, and then we'll see City Parks...
Me talk?
You have to talk.
Well, um, first of all, I'd like to thank God, of course, for putting me in a position to help the community youths. Definitely my wife, Tracy, for always being there. My family, my children, my son Weston Junior, who's always there. There's, I might get emotional on this one, but there's one person that I do want to thank for just guiding me to be a volunteer, and his name is the late Reggie Ward Senior. He was my right-hand man, he was my guy, and he pushed me to help kids and just to be a better, better person in our community and always got them in the right way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Teresa, appreciate it for this award, thank you so much, have a great day, thank you.
So everybody want to come forward for photos, please? And I do want to thank everyone at City Parks, whether you got a proclamation, whether it's your six days, six months, six years, or for, you know, for a lifetime, the work with the public is, is always rewarding and challenging, both, so I just want to thank you very much for all your work.
So devoted, I'm sorry, she's so dedicated to the rink that you, it's hard to pull her away from it. All the workers, you've seen us be, come to this proclamation ceremonies, and it's all due to Councilwoman Smith for her thoughtfulness for the city staff employees, and they are so honored when they come up here and receive their proclamations. So we're so proud of the employees, that's what the city's about, City Parks is about, is their dedication, their service to the people they serve, to their communities, and I, I thank everyone, thank you so much for the support to City Parks.
Thank you. We will now take comment from those in chambers wishing to speak. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Good morning. Carlino Giampolo, Panther Hollow. Integrity is spontaneous individual honesty. This is how I began my testimony last week on October 29th, when I asked Councilmember Barbara Warwick, who authorized the skateboarders to build the skate park in Panther Hollow? She had no answer. Afterwards, she had another opportunity to act upon her integrity when asked the same question via email. Again, she had no answer. Councilmember Warwick is the public face, voice, and leader of the skateboarders at the skate park in Panther Hollow, even though she does not represent our community. Since my first testimony on July 15th, she has been presented with a greater understanding of this issue and the ongoing painful and life-altering impacts the illegal skate park has had on Panther Hollow residents. She has offered them no empathy or any level of caring. The shame of our strong support for the illegal skate park was passed on to our fellow council members, who were then given the opportunity to decide whether or not to accept that shame. In my October 15 testimony, I revealed that the other eight council members decided to shut down the illegal skate park. Since then, the council members could have had a change of heart and come forward to say the Panther Hollow residents deserve the harmful impact of the illegal skate park. However, none have done so, and therefore their decision has not changed. Now, another public official must decide whether to support the skate park, as Councilmember Warwick has done, or to it, shut down, as the other eight council members have indicated. That official is Mayor Ed Gany. Should our community move forward with legal recourse, the city's position would be indefensible. No notice was given to the community of the life-altering skate park. No permits were issued for the massive new construction. No certificate of occupancy was obtained. No assessments were made of the detrimental impacts such as noise and traffic, and no city supervision was provided to protect taxpayers from liability. These are only a few of the skate park's violations of the Pittsburgh Municipal Code. However, the bigger picture of this issue has always been dignity. The mayor must now make his decision based upon respect for his own dignity and respect for the dignity of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Hello, everyone, my name is William Parker, I represent the whole Pittsburgh. I just wanted to congratulate everybody who received their proclamations today, um, thank, I wanted to thank them for their service, but I'm also here to remind everybody that tomorrow is Election Day, and I hope that everybody gets out and vote if they haven't already, it's clearly, and you could clearly see who I'm voting for tomorrow, but, uh, I want everybody to make sure you get out here and vote, shout out to Councilman Coghill, I'm not in his district, or I would be voting for him, but good luck to you, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Javon F. Brown, I live at 715 Mercer Street, that's in Katy Weaver's Tires, up on the top of Bedford. You know, every time I look at, and I, I don't pronounce your name right, that's why I don't say it, but I look at this man, he has been vilified in here. Whole room, everybody's speaking against him, whereas he's speaking where he lives and what has been done, and no one had, had asked the citizens, not just him. Like he said, he got 80-year-old, uh, got 80-year-old and 90-year-old citizens, seniors just like I am. I understand what he's saying about the skateboards. I told you when I lived in California, my son Anthony had a skateboard, but they had areas where you could skate, and I mean, those skateboards make a lot of noise, they're banging and clanging, now you had all the, you had different ones telling you how it helped them to play, to do the skateboards, but what time were they doing it? Was it at night, 12, 3, or 1, 2 o'clock at night, like they're having a party? I, I, I praise you, I praise you, because you are fighting for what's yours, your community, and you have someone to do, to, to do that, and it's wrong. Okay, um, I, I could keep on talking about him, but I wanted again to bring this picture. This is a picture of my husband Harold Brown, and this is a picture of my grandbaby Marciana, who is now 22 and in college, and this one, uh, Nekua is 24. Nekua came here as a baby, I used to take him, and, and, and we had other, uh, other people that brought their children, and my children, I brought them here for a reason. When, when Reverend, well, Mr. Burgess said that it was not the time and the place for my five-year-old to speak, I, um, really don't appreciate it, when that, yes, had your babies, white babies, they had proclamations, they brought their white babies, my grandbaby, they have been taught that there is their duty, I'm telling you, I, this is the way I teach them. I teach them that we have to come and tell you what we need, you don't be in my neighborhood, you don't know. You may be there and not see, we actually live there, I walk, and people tell me to come down here and tell you, I'm just not coming by myself. I'm coming because I am tired of you just ignoring the people, the poor people, not what color, you, like I say, I'm an advocate for children, youth, families, seniors, and homeless people. I didn't bring the cup where the homeless man had stopped me and said, there's an Asian cop on the south side that's beating the homeless people, taking their laptops, and so on. Do better, do better, do better.
Hello. The missing child, Sarice Taylor, now known as Special Agent Sunshine. Matthew 28:19 says, Jesus said, "Go and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit." Father, when you were on earth, you prayed. In your heart, in your hours of distress, you retreated into moments of prayer. In your hours of joy, you lifted your heart and hands in prayer. Help us to be more like you in this way, help us to make prayer a priority in our lives. How many of y'all pray? Demons don't pray, you pray on people, that's what you do. And it's just amazing how Strasburger has used her intern to try and take me out this past weekend, yet here, I still stand. It didn't work, I'm still here. It's amazing how God is using me. Psalm 34:15 and 16 says, "The Lord sees the good people and listens to their prayers, for the Lord is against those who do evil, he makes the world forget them." It's evil to try and take people out, especially to try and use somebody else to do it, when you're too much of a, I don't even want to use the word, to do it yourself. The wisdom for today comes from Proverbs 12:8, it says, "A man is praised according to his wisdom, but men with warped minds are despised." A warped-minded man to me is a man who wants sex work to be legal. We are not teaching and raising our children to come out here on the street and sell themselves for money. But it's amazing how there's somebody out here trying to make me look like that, they're lying, saying that that's what I'm doing. I'd rather be broke with nothing, 'cause God is still sustaining me with nothing. My heart still beats with nothing, 'cause he's the one that make it beat, money will never make my heart beat. The thought for today is, God can use me wherever I am. He uses me here, he uses me in the Harvest Street Mission on the Northside on Sundays, he uses me every day at the Red Door Mission, uh, at, on Boulevard the Allies in Stanwyck Street, and everywhere I go, he uses me. And I just want to say thank you, Lord, for using me to do your will, not mine, and to still be here, doing it, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
It's good afternoon. My name is David Tessitore, Banksville, District 2. The area of the proclamations today have a very strong personal connection with me. On the first, I've run bringing before you the issue of the parks and the problems with that, and I want to make personally clear that that is in no way intended to denigrate any of the efforts that the public employees have been doing. I came from a family where both my parents were public, dedicated public employees, and I appreciate all that can be done. It is to point out to the contrary, that their efforts are undermined by the poor structure where we have six different political, or six different public bodies responsible for the parks, and that is divided up and too many cooks boiling the broth, and things have been falling through the tracks such as Sheridan Park, which is the largest traditional park in District 2. That's why we need to have this council and the next council focusing on the possibility and the way in which we need to return to having the parks under one management. one management as it once was when the parks were in good condition. My other issue is with the CMU connection in that my great-grandfather came to this country, trained as a plumber and a tenor, and he moved in with a young Andrew Carnegie and his family when Andy was just a young teen on the North Side. Andy and his friends broke his strong Scottish brogue, and within a couple of years, having his trade training, he was able to have a large business started down in Swickley. When my great-grandfather passed away, it was then that Andy Carnegie started the planning for Carnegie Institute with the stated reason that this was to provide training in the trades so that young men would have an opportunity to get ahead. That has gone on to become CMU. So it may not have been the entire reason for it, but my great-grandfather had a strong role in influencing Andy, just as Colonel Anderson did with the libraries. So I very much appreciated the connection with CMU, and I do hope that this council will in the future take up the issue, depending on whoever's on it in the next term, with the issue of getting our structural changes with neighborhood integrated services, with unified parks, and with community advisory teams. That's what this city needs. I thank you very much for your attention, and if people want more information, go to PittsburghDistrictTwo.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll turn to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Charland, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley, Chair of Governmental Educational Affairs. Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 2426, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 1212 Smallman Street at No Cost to the City. Bill 2427, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement or agreements with the County of Allegheny to support children, youth, and family programs administered by the Department of Human Services, total cost not to exceed $2,400,000 over two years. Bill 2428, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and Bridge Side Point One LLC or a Related Entity for the Sale of Block 29F, Lots 26, 28, and 80, Fourth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, Second Avenue and Technology Drive, Council District Number Three at No Cost to the City. Bill 2429, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract by Disposition by Sale of Land Between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the Sale of Block 10N, Lots 287 and 288, Fifth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, Council District Number Six, Center Avenue at No Cost to the City. Bill 2430, Resolution Amending Resolution 469 of 2003, effective June 18, 2003, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interest, If Any, in Into the Following Publicly-Owned Property in the City of Pittsburgh, Council District Six, Residential Construction, Fifth Ward, 2249 Mahan Street, 2244 Mahan Street, 2237 Mahan Street, and 2235 Mahan Street. By Removing Parcel 10K21, 2249 Mahan Street, Council District Number Six at No Cost to the City." Bill Number 2431, Resolution, Amending Resolution 174 of 2020, effective April 22, 2020, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interest, If Any, in Into the Publicly-Owned Properties in the Fifth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, Designated in the deed Registry Office, Council District Number Six, Mixed-Use New Construction Rehabilitation Commercial Affordable Housing, by Removing Parcels 10P134A, 10P135, 10P136, 10P137, and 10P138, Le Place Street and Center Avenue, Council District Number Six at No Cost to the City.
And Councilwoman Kell Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number 2432, Resolution Approving a Recommendation, Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Mayfair and Wind Gap be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Councilwoman, do you wish to waive rule eight on this?
Yes, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 2432 will be on tomorrow's Senate Committee Agenda. Then Councilman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, today's standing committee agenda. I just realized why you looked at me funny.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2433, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title I Administrative, Article IX, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities, Chapter 178A, Youth Commission and Youth Council, by strengthening the commission's alignment with the City of Pittsburgh's structure to ensure that it reflects the diversity of young people across all neighborhoods and communities, thus prioritizing the lived experiences of Pittsburgh's youth to inform the decisions of the city's elected leadership. Bill 2434, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Submit a Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Fund Grant Application to the Pennsylvania Office of Commonwealth Laboratories for the replacement of the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning and roofing systems at the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh's Royal Hill Branch amount not to exceed $400,000 for this stated purpose. Bill 2435, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales, Items A through AA. 1703 Cliff Street, Council District Six, 1707 Cliff Street, Council District Six, 539 Robber Street, District Six, 539 Robber Street, District Six, 2814 Bedford Avenue, District Six, 2223 Webster Avenue, District Six, 2259 Webster Avenue, District Six, 5218 Rosetta Street, District Nine, 0 Fram Street, District Nine, 0 Hell Street, District Nine, 0 Dursum Street, District Nine, 8366 Breisland Street, District Nine, 8373 Vidette Street, District Nine, 4640 Chatsworth Street, District Five, 0 Winston Street, District Five, 11 Muskego Way, District Two, 0 Boggs Avenue, District Two, 1230 Crucible Street, District Two, 904 Valonia Street, District Two, 807 Lorenz Avenue, District Two, 3124 Sutherland Street, District Two, 841 Levitt Way, District One, 909 Morrison Street, District Six, 0 Boyle Street, District Six, 4136 Franklin Road, District One, 2344 California Avenue, District One, and 2348 California Avenue, District One.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2436, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Noble Environmental Specialty Recycling for Programming, Collection, and Recycling of Household Hazardous Chemicals and Electronic Waste for City Residents' Use at City Costs Not to Exceed $571,250 over a two-year period with two, over two years with three separate options for one-year renewals.
And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2437, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to Enter into an Agreement with Connect to Complete Work as Part of a Soil Mill PGH, our Common Ground Initiative, in an Amount Not to Exceed $125,000.
And I have four communications.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 2438, Communication from Jake Pollack, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grants Office for the Week Ended, October 31, 2025. Bill 2439, Communication from Rachel Heisler, City Controller, Submitting a Pittsburgh Public Schools Procurement Practices Special Report for Years 2425, dated October 2025. Bill 2440, Communication from Jake Pollack, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a Donation to the Department of Public Safety from the Pittsburgh Pro Soccer LLC for the Purchase of Smoke Detectors to be Given to City Residents in an Amount Not to Exceed $1,000. And Bill 2441, Communication from Jake Pollack, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting an Acting Pay Request on behalf of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for Seth Pulver per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June 2018.
Am I in the motion to read, receive, and file?
Moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The bills have been read, received, and will be filed. That takes us to reports of Committee for Final Action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, President of the Committee of Finance and Law.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2418, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for October 29, 2025, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2373, Resolution Repealing an Item in Resolution 771 of 2024, Effective Date, October 31, 2024, in order to rescind the sale. Bill 2374, Resolution Repealing an Item in Resolution 68 of 2018, Effective Date, March 1, 2018, in order to rescind the sale. Bill 2375, Resolution Repealing an Item in Resolution 780, Effective December 29, 2016, in order to rescind the sale. Bill 2379, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Foster &amp; Foster Consulting Actuaries, Inc., relating to actuary services for calculating pension benefits at a cost not to exceed $7,000 over one year. Bill 2380, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Andrew Boodoo for Single Payment in 2025 in an Amount Not to Exceed $5,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation File with the Commission on Human Relations. Bill 2381, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant payable in favor of Dicky McCamey and Chillcoat for One-Time Legal Services rendered for an Amount Not to Exceed $50,000 over one year. And Bill 2390, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 857 of 2023, Effective December 27, 2023, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2024 Capital Budget, the Proposed 2024 Community Development Program and the 2024 through 2029 Capital Improvement Program by Decreasing Facility Improvements, Sports Facilities by $505,769.08 and Increasing Park Reconstruction by $505,769.08."
You refer to reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass this of the bill will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Charland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill, having received a legally required number of votes, is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, President of the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2419, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for October 29, 2025, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2382, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Commit Future 2028, 2029, and 2030 Bond Funds for the Local Match of the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Grant from the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission in an Amount Not to Exceed $1,440,000 for the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure's East Warrington Avenue Project. Bill 2383, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Commit Future 2028, 2029, and 2030 Bond Funds for the Local Match of the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Grant from the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission in an Amount Not to Exceed $1,104,000 in, for the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure's Murray Avenue Project.
You refer to reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor to pass this of the bill will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Charland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill, having received a legally required number of votes, is passed finally. That moves us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, President of the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2420, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for October 29, 2025, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2376, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 924, 2024, Effective December 18, 2024, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2025 Capital Budget, the Proposed 2025 Community Development Program and the 2025 through 2030 Capital Improvement Program, so as to Grant $550,000 to Specific Public Service Grant Projects and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement or Agreements." Bill 2377, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 924, 2024, Effective December 18, 2024, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2025 Capital Budget, the Proposed 2025 Community Development Program and the 2025 through 2030 Capital Improvement Program, so as to Fund the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank at $200,000 and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement or Agreements." Bill 2378, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 924, 2024, Effective December 18, 2024, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2025 Capital Budget, the Proposed 2025 Community Development Program and the 2025 through 2030 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing CDBG Administration by $2,093, Decreasing Emergency Solutions Grant by $17,550, Decreasing Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS by $8,674, and Decreasing Home Investment Partnerships Program by $9,415.36." These changes are made in response to program allocations by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and come at no cost to the city. Bill 2386, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement or Agreement with various community-based organizations for the Implementation of the 2025 Napier Hood Economic Development Program and to Provide for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $720,000. Bill 2387, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with the Jewish Healthcare Foundation to Provide Administration and Operating Expenses, Housing and Housing-related Supportive Services to Persons with HIV and AIDS and their Families, Total Cost Not to Exceed $1,401,162. Bill 2388, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with the Urban League of Pittsburgh for the Implementation and Administration of the Housing Counseling Program and Related Costs Not to Exceed $100,000. Bill 2389, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Agencies to Provide Emergency Shelter Services, Street Outreach Services, Rental Assistance in Housing Relocation and Stabilization Services, and/or Data Collection Activities as Associated with the 2025 Emergency Solutions Grant Funds at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,177,534. Bill 2415, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into an amended and restated Community Collaboration and Implementation Plan for the Lower Hill redevelopment at no cost to the city.
You refer to reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Charland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally, and that takes us finally to Councilman Cory Mosley, presenting the Committee on Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 2421, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for October 29, 2025, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2367, Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh, Designating URA as a City's Agent for the Administration of the 2025-2026 Home Investments Partnership Program, Cost Not To Exceed $1,986,153.64 for all Council Districts. Bill 2368, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interests If Any, and Into the Publicly-Owned Properties in the 18th Ward, City of Pittsburgh, Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County, as Block 14E, Lot 11 and 12, 0 Curtain Avenue, District Three, at No Cost to the City. Bill 2369, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interests If Any, and Into the Publicly-Owned Property in the 18th Ward, City of Pittsburgh, Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County, as Block 15L, Lot 195, 111 Shelfon Street, Council District Three, at No Cost to the City. Bill 2370, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interests If Any, and Into the Publicly-Owned Property in the 26th Ward, City of Pittsburgh, Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County, as Block 116G, Lot 42, 372 Latimer Street, Council District One, at No Cost to the City. Bill 2371, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interests If Any, and Into the Publicly-Owned Property in the 12th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County, as Block 124P, Lot 79A, 6411 Meadow Street, Council District Nine, at No Cost to the City. And Bill 2372, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interests If Any, and Into the Publicly-Owned Properties in the 24th and 26th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County, as Block 47P, Lot 43, Block 47A, Lot 186 and 199, Block 47E, Lot 14, Block 47G, Lot 84, Block 47J, Lot 353, 1230 Iton Street, 1134 and 1108 Fabian Street, 921 Softside Avenue, 188 Rockledge Street, 2104 Lap Lane, and Council District Number One, No Cost to the City.
You have heard the reading and entitled the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when her name is called. Those opposed will vote no, but a clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received a legally required number of votes is passed finally, and that takes us to motions and resolutions. Anything from members? Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you. I just want to wish everyone luck tomorrow and remind everyone to vote, but wish all my colleagues luck tomorrow. It's been an honor serving with all of you. And whoever, win, lose, or draw tomorrow, if you have political signs in the public right of way, get them out. That's all. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Uh, yes, I, I...
It drives me crazy.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Anything else from members? If not, I meant to do it last week, but I forgot to call for a, um, a post-agenda on the comprehensive plan.
Oh, second. Or should I call for the motion?
If you would call for it.
Motion to, for a post-agenda on the comprehensive plan.
We actually have started working with the clerk's office to actually get it scheduled, but I forgot to formally call for it last week, so thank you.
Can't wait.
We need a second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll finish working with the clerk's office, get on the calendar. Anything else from members? If not, we have meeting announcements this afternoon at 1:30 p.m. Council will meet for our standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close at 12:30 today. Then on Thursday, November 6, 1:30, Council will hold a cablecast post-agenda discussion on options for increasing revenue in the City of Pittsburgh chaired by Councilwoman Warwick. Then on Friday, November 7, at 11 a.m., Council will hold a cablecast post-agenda discussion on independent venues chaired by Councilperson Sharland. To register to speak at any of these meetings, please fill the sign-up form on the Council meeting webpage or call the Clerk's Office at 412-255-2138.
You, that...
Councilman Sharland.
Sorry, if I can jump in here. That was what I meant to say. I know that a Friday post-agenda is no one's favorite here, but I do think this is a really important topic with our, you know, the way that scheduling is going to go for the end of the year here. It was tough to find a time that could work, but we, I have been in contact with the National Association of Independent Venues, so think smaller venues. In my district, it's Bottle Rocket Club Cafe, but think things like Thunderbird, or I couldn't even mention all the other ones throughout the city, but those kind of venues that are right now kind of being gobbled up by Ticketmaster and Live Nation nationwide, and if we really do want to consider these cultural institutions, you know, that make our neighborhoods what they are, if we want to support them, I do encourage members to attend this, this post-agenda. I'm really interested in what they have to say and what we can do to make sure that we're growing our own artists and keeping our own artists, and also all the, all the employment that happens in these venues that are not necessarily artist-related, but are really important here. So I know Friday at 11 is no one's favorite, but I do ask if any of you could attend. I would, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation, Councilman. I didn't even know there was a National Association of Independent Venues. I have a, I have a standing Lower Hill meeting on Fridays at 10, but I will make sure to join virtually after, once that meeting's over.
Thank you.
Anything else from members? If not, motion to, everyone was here, so motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
To move.
To move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.[1761.86]